Standing in front of the podium now, fooled everybody. Welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. Mayor Herndon is out of town on business, so he has a job for me to do and I told him I'll do it on his behalf, but I like to call the meeting to order. I like to start by saying a prayer. Right to our prayer, we're going to the pledge. Let's please stand, please. Gracious and heavenly Father, bless these men and women that are here today. We ask that you grant them wisdom and understanding to make decisions that are acceptable in your sight. Bless our city, bless those who are less fortunate, bless those who serve our country, bless those who are at war right now in front of harm's way, may you bring them safely home to their families. We ask these and many more blessings in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Hayes?
Here.
You alright?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Can we proceed?
Yes, we can.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Acker?
Here.
Councilman Harper?
Here.
President Logan?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
We have one proclamation that Mayor Herndon and his office asked for me to do and it's Mr. Walter Turner, good friend of the city of Northport. Mr. Turner, if you would, come up, please. I like getting them lighthearted things y'all did at first, I always like lighthearted. I know Mayor Herndon always says something that always have people thinking and, of course, I'm not quick to think real quick, but I will say this, I do appreciate all our veterans who have served our country and those who are serving currently. I know Walter, you are always a big supporter, so this is a proclamation regarding National POW MIA Recognition Day. Whereas "No One Left Behind" is one of many mottos that refer to the efforts of the Department of Defense to recover those who became missing while serving our nation, whereas between World War II and more recent conflicts, more than eighty-three thousand Americans are missing and unaccounted for, and whereas we will never forget their sacrifice, nor will we ever abandon our responsibility to do everything in our power to bring them home. And whereas the first commemoration of POW MIA's was July eighteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, and whereas in nineteen eighty-six, the third Friday in September became the National Day of Observance for POWs MIA's, and whereas POW MIA Recognition Day is a day of remembrance and hope for the speedy and safe return of American prisoners of war and those still missing in action. Now therefore Bobby Herndon's office, by the authority vested in him as mayor of the city of Northport, do hereby proclaim Friday, September eighteenth, twenty fifteen, to be POW MIA Recognition Day in the city of Northport and encourage our citizens to remember our missing soldiers and those hailed as prisoners of war. A witness hereto, I've set my hand and cause a seal of Northport to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of August twenty fifteen. Signed, Mayor Bobby Herndon. Walter, we thank you so much for your service and thank you so much for promoting our veterans. I think you've got something that you want to add.
Thank you, Mayor Herndon and the county council. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the men and women who have served and sacrificed to keep America free, those former POWs and the families of those that remain missing. As Americans let us all recommit ourselves to remaining strong in our devotion to the principles, to our devotion to the principles for which so many courageously fought and sacrificed. On eighteen September two thousand fifteen, let us take pause and remember those who put country before self and did not return home to their families. Let us remember the families of the missing who continue to burn the candle of hope. Let us continue to tell America the story that without the service and sacrifice of the American servicemen and woman, they would not have been a United States of America. May God bless our former prisoners of war, may God bless the memory of the missing and their families, may God keep our men and women in uniform safe and their families strong, and may God continue to bless the United States of America. I want to invite everybody out to VFW Post six oh two-two on Friday, September eighteenth, at two o'clock. We're gonna be having our annual POW MIA recognition ceremony, and if you've never witnessed a ceremony of this nature, I'll promise you, you will never forget it. Thank you.
In our pre-meeting, we had a quick synopsis of our items on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Acker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. President, just one, just a consideration that we have requested an executive session at the end of this meeting that will take approximately ten minutes.
Thank you. And we will probably do that executive session after our public comment. Is that okay with council? Alright. Alright.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Unfinished business. Item seven A-one is a second reading of a permanent resolution accepting the municipal improvements in Bristol Park subdivision. Mr. Davis?
Uh, yes, sir. This is an ordinary resolution. This is accepting all the developers' improvements for phase one of Bristol Park.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve that permanent resolution accepting the maintenance and public improvements for the right-of-way at phase one of Bristol Park?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Acker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Seven A-two is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the conditional use approval for a kennel at four one zero five Flatwoods Road. Ms. Gay?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve that and authorize the conditional use for a kennel located at four one zero five Flatwoods Road?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Harper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Acker? Any questions or comments?
I have one. What does the conditional use mean?
That's a motion by Councilman Harper, second by Councilman Acker, comment by Councilwoman Hayes of District One. Any further comments or discussion?
Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Eight A-two is a resolution appointing a member to the Civil Service Board, Mr. Collins, for the new business.
Mr. President, members of council, as you're aware, we have a vacancy on the Civil Service Board. The request from staff and administration is that Mr. Lance Johnson be appointed to that vacancy left by Mr. Paul Hubbard. We have a second request that Dr. John Hinton be reappointed to the term that he is currently seating in. His previous term expired, we're simply asking for a reappointment of Dr. Hinton to his seat and the new appointment of Mr. Johnson to the seat vacated by Mr. Hubbard. That would require two votes of the city council.
Thank you. So a motion to approve the resolution appointing Mr. Lance Johnson to the Civil Service Board.
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Acker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Second resolution request is a resolution reappointing Dr. John Hinton to the Civil Service Board. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item three is a resolution declaring certain items a surplus unauthorized near disposal. Mr. Ingram, these basically are two pickup trucks that have reached their useful life and we will process those through our surplus process, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Acker. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four is a resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with Carols Creek Water Authority, Mr. Davis or Mr. Collins. You guys can add a brief synopsis.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, this is part of the widening of Midlary Road. Basically, the utilities are being moved by Alabama Power, Alabama Gas, and this allows Carols Creek Water Authority to move their lines out of the right-of-way. It also allows the city to purchase certain customers. This is what's been anticipated as part of this road project and it's ready for vote by the council.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with Carols Creek Water Authority?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Acker, is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item five is a resolution accepting the two thousand fourteen municipal audit, Mr. Collins.
Um, yes, Mr. President, members of council, as you are aware, the city has received from our auditors, our two thousand fourteen municipal audit. We heard that presentation at the pre-meeting that we had earlier tonight. Staff recommends that that audit be accepted as a part of the process we have for receiving that in the minutes and making that audit a part of the public record.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution accepting the two thousand fourteen municipal audit?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Acker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper.
Sir, we're gonna call some, we're, one moment.
Mr. Earl, in the spirit of decorum, we've got a motion by Councilman Acker, second by Councilman Harper, and I think if we're gonna have discussions, I see you have signed up, but now that's gonna be on item thirteen. With respect to that, well, it's whatever you want, you know, it'll be your two and a half, three minutes, but if, if...
I'm very sorry to interrupt you, but I thought that came in.
No, you messed up my flow. You just, I had it going. Okay, we had a motion by Councilman Acker, second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? This is only for elected officials on questions and comments. Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Are you finished, sir? Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item six is a resolution adopting a hazard mitigation plan, Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, as you're aware, we discussed at the pre-meeting the adoption, the city's adoption of a hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan that we had before you is presented by the Tuskegee County EMA. This is their hazard mitigation plan, is part of their requirements. Those plans must be approved by the municipalities within respective county and the county commission. Those approvals have been done in the form of actions by Tuskegee City Council, other municipalities in the county and the county commission. Our request, you deny this simply to adopt the same hazard mitigation plan as those agencies have adopted as part of the EMA plan.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution adopting the Tuskegee County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item C is our consent agenda. We have eighteen items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, PO requisitions, and travel and training for various employees. Do I have a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed?
Move to approve as printed, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Harper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Collins.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none. Item ten is public hearings. We have none on the agenda for tonight. Item eleven, city administrator's business, Mr. Collins.
Mr. President, just a reminder that City Hall will be closed one week from today. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, September twenty-first.
Thank you. Item twelve, departmental business. We have none to report tonight. Item thirteen, public comment. We have a citizen signed up, Mr. John Earl. Please state your name and address for the record.
I want to apologize for my misunderstanding. I thought that the, when you sign up to comment a particular thing on the agenda, that you do it in the context of the presentation. I was obviously mistaken. Sorry about the inconvenience that may have caused.
This is all a learning experience for me, too.
Yeah, well, basically, I'm only asking a question. I'm saying that the audit's a very important thing and it's a matter of public record and the code of Alabama requires that it be presented before the council publicly and that it be spread upon the minutes of the council. I'm not sure exactly how that would apply to a pre-council meeting when twenty minutes were used to present the audit, but I was hoping that I would get some kind of confirmation that the entire audit would be published either in the context of the minutes online or somewhere on the website so the public would have access. The reason I'm asking this is there is no room that you can go to in Northport to go to get a document such as the audit. It's something that you have to request and make an appointment for something to bring out. There's no place you can go and access it, so I would like to know whether there'd be some way for the public to look at the audit, either online or maybe in an open area in the city hall. But since it is something that should be available to the public, is a matter of the public record, and a copy should be available to members of the public, so I'm wondering if there will be some sort of, will the minutes be exceptionally long and include the entire audit, or would be published elsewhere on the city's website?
The, a copy of the audit will be included with the city's minutes and we will post a copy of the audit on the city's website.
Oh, eighty pages, ninety pages?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
That was easy, John. Thank you. Mr. Steven Schwab, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steven Schwab, twenty-five Twenty-Fifth Street, Northport. I wish to focus your attention on the intersection of Fifth Street and Thirtieth Avenue. Fortunately, there is now a good and prospering restaurant for the first time in recent memory at that intersection, Pastor's Kitchen, which has great service and good food. The only downside that I see is the increase in vehicular traffic at that intersection, especially at lunch and dinner. There is also the mart across the street. I brought my neighbor Louis Hobson and David and Gina Allgood with me to this meeting because we all want the same thing. We want the city council to reinstitute four-way stop signs at that intersection. We also want that to be a safe intersection, both for the patrons of Pastor's Kitchen and for the pedestrians, particularly the small children who cross the street to go to the mart. The fact that there are sidewalks along Fifth Avenue is both a blessing and a curse. Sidewalks enhance the appearance of any neighborhood. I know that because I lived for three years in a South American city that had no sidewalks in the downtown area. But sidewalks are for pedestrians and they also attract bicyclists. To make them safe, crosswalks become necessary. I'm trying to uphold the interests of a residential community where people walk their dogs, they also jog, and there are occasional bicyclists. I want to safeguard their lives. For more than fifty years, transportation planners all over the United States have treated city streets mainly as conduits for cars and trucks, and they regulate roads primarily to maximize driving speeds. Sadly, as a result of this perspective, the quality of life in virtually all of our cities and even our towns has frequently become miserable for the residents, many of whom have fled to outlying areas for relative safety, peace, and quiet. Streets designed and regulated solely with driving speeds in mind discourage people from walking and bicycling. They become difficult and unattractive places with few pedestrian crossings. People also stop enjoying their front and side yards. They ignore or they don't know their neighbors. Many homeowners have essentially written off their yards as a place to relax and be, largely because of the speed and volume of traffic. Isn't it time that we started designing communities for people instead of for automobiles and trucks? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next citizen, and I don't want to mispronounce the name, but it's address five oh six twenty-sixth. Ms. Hobson?
My name is Louis Hobson. I live at five oh six twenty-sixth Avenue. I'll be real brief. At the risk of sounding prerogative, which I am not intending to, the people in my community feel that if there were a gated community instead of a public housing project across the street from the mart, a stoplight would already be in place at the intersection of Fifth Street and Thirty Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry and Paul Humphreys, downtown Northport merchants.
How you doing, council and citizens? Terry Humphreys, Paul Humphreys, Billy's Sports Grill, over in Northport, four thirty Main Avenue. What we're here tonight about is we'd like to sort of bring to the forefront some things that we've noticed as, you know, now we're a tenant and what we consider a corporate citizen of Northport. We came to Northport about three years ago. We invested about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in improving one of the Old Town District buildings. We paid taxes and along the way and produced revenue for the city, but some of, and we're doing a lot of advertising. This year, we've contracted with stadium events and we'll be on the Jumbotron for the football games, gymnastics, basketball. So we're making a very substantial commitment and what we'd like to ask for is somewhat more of a commitment from the council to the Northport area. One of the things we do is we pay for a shuttle service and we provide free shuttle parking in Northport. It's not for customers of Billy's, it's anybody that can, anybody can ride it to the stadium and back three hours before and three hours after. Originally, when I started, I requested some assistance to, because I thought it was just a good thing to promote for other merchants and they, you know, people come and park there and they purchase things from us, they purchase things from a lot of other people, but they get exposed to that downtown environment that we love and the reason that we made our commitment to come here. But I would like to ask, one of the things we're here about, and on behalf of some other merchants, and Paul's gonna address those, but is to ask that the council consider doing something in terms of that game day shuttle, and I think free parking and game day shuttle is a great way to promote the downtown area of Northport. We'll continue it on our own if we have to, and we're prepared to do that, but it's really been a welcome thing for people to come up and they say, well, do we have to come in your store? No, you can just line up and get on and ride and we'll take you downtown and bring you back. Paul's got an agenda here of a few items that some of the local merchants ask us to present.
Yeah, and basically, I'm just concerned with the general upkeep and maintenance of the downtown Northport district. When we first got there, we did, like my dad said, we did all these improvements and we just saw, started seeing things fall apart around us, like, you know, light poles and trash being left in the middle of the streets for weeks at a time. You know, poles getting knocked over by big trucks, speed breakers being pulled up and cars running through there at sixty miles an hour to the point where patrons don't want to sit on the patio because they're afraid that a car's just gonna jump through the patio and hit them. We've experienced two wrecks in front of the intersection. We've experienced two broad daylight break-ins of cars in that intersection, and luckily we've caught the people, but it just seems that, you know, when it comes to the general upkeep and maintenance, you know, all the trees are dying, the plants are dying because they don't have a sprinkler system to keep them up. Two years ago, y'all went back and replanted all these new plants and it looked great, but without water, they all died. It just seems like we're going through this process year after year after year. We try to improve and it just destroys, you know, the community just thinks that, you know, especially like the Anders and Adams that's been there for multiple generations, this is what they expressed to me, and there's a concern about it, and I think a lot of them just gave up. They just, they just really gave up because they discouraged me from the beginning. They said, you're doing a great thing, you've got a great looking restaurant, you're doing good things for the city, but they're never gonna fix, you know, fix things. It's always gonna be like this. And I didn't believe them at first, but after three years, I'm starting to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for letting us know that. Paul, let me, let me give you a plan of action, if it's okay. I think you, in our pre-meeting, you gave Scott a punch list of items, so if you'll allow Scott's office to get what our public works to maybe go through those punch list items, then I think you guys are gonna correspond via email, so if you would, make sure that, I know Scott will do that, he'll keep council informed in terms of some of the short-term stuff we can do, and I think Terry, I think you had more of a fiscal impact request, I'm just being, so that may be something for Scott's office again to give us some numbers in terms of what we can and can't do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Wow, wow. That's what it says on here. State your name and address for the record.
Kenneth Walters, I live at forty-eight thirteen Almas Avenue in Stewart Park. The reason I'm coming back this morning today is because last month, Mr. Snob over here, he made some remarks about the middle-class people, and that offended me because he kind of referred to the police department, the only way you can make an average living is be a policeman if you don't have a college education. You know, there's a lot of people out here that make an average wage with not a college education. As far as his information, you know, shit like our policeman, our fireman, all these people work very, very hard, and you know, you can go to work at the police department, fire department, and if your wife don't work, you're gonna have to go get another job. So you know, if we can indulge our energies more on our workers, now what the guys are saying about the flowers, I ain't got no problem with that, but you know, what I do have a problem with is restoring all these old houses for these rich people that want us to do it. We can take that money and keep our own streets up and stuff like that. But Mr. Snob, I know he's an adjunct professor, whatever that is, I don't know, but you know, they're trying to organize all the adjunct professors in Berkeley, California, because they're on food stamps, so I don't know if that be, they may need a raise. Anyplace you go to work now, you can't make an average living. You can go at Goodrich, you can't support your family with one income, and so, you know, we need to focus more on all of our employees and taking care of our own public interest infrastructure. And you know, I hope, like I asked y'all last month, I hope y'all do something with these old houses, let somebody buy them, they can put anything they want, lingerie, I don't care what to put in them, but let them tote that note over there. But you know, you don't have to be a college graduate, but you gotta go to work and you can't work no eight hours. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. David Allgood. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Allgood, six one five twenty-sixth Avenue in Northport. I just wanted to concur with my neighbors, Mr. Schwab, Mr. Hobson, that I too would like to see the stop sign reinstalled at the intersection of Thirty Avenue and Fifth Street. I for one don't know why it was taken down in the first place. I remember a comment when it was taken down, either by the mayor or one of the councilmen, that expressed the opinion that it was Northport's job to get traffic through downtown as quickly as possible, and I could not disagree more. as possible, and I could not dis- disagree more. That's not Northport's job. I think, uh, should be responsible to the citizens like- like myself and Mr. Hobson and Mr. Schwab who live here twenty-four seven. Uh, from Thirtieth Avenue all the way to Tresl is completely residential, there's no business there, um, and I can say also that when the stop sign was there, that traffic not only slowed down, but there was less traffic, that people from- from Coker and Buell and Gordo were using Highway eighty-two as they should. So, I would like to see that reinstalled and the speed tables put back in place. So, I think they were very effective, it made our- our neighborhood safer and made it a- a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I give all three gentlemen a plan of action? Again, I will get your name and number to Ms. Charles Swan in his office, and again, there is a process, a traffic study you have to do, uh, I- I don't want to give you any kind of false hope, but again, I don't know what the M U T C D manual may state in terms of that nature, so I will pass this along, and Scott's office will get a copy of this so he can start the correspondence. That is all the citizens we have signed up to speak tonight, I think, uh, the next request from Mr. Collins's office to go into executive session, is that correct, Ms. Collins?
Yes, Mr. President, that's correct.
I'm not gonna have council comments first.
Uh, yes, yes ma'am, if- if, can we do it right after our executive session? Yes, ma'am. Because I think executive session in our pre-meeting, Scott, was no- no more than ten minutes.
That is correct.
Okay. If council pleases, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, property matters relative to, uh, the city of Newport. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hayes? Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Collins.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Acker?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, we are, members, we will return at approximately six forty-five P M.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are completed with our executive session. We will move right along to item number fourteen, which is mayor and council members' business. Of course, the Honorable Mayor Bobby Hearn is out of town, I'll start with District One, Honorable Councilwoman Judy Hayes.
Hi, um, at August seventeenth, council meeting, I raised the issue of a ten million dollar emergency line of credit that was authorized by a vote on the- by the council on March fourth, two- twenty thirteen. Um, City Administrator Collins responded that the ten million dollar line of credit did not exist and it never existed. This gave the impression that I had to ask about something that did not happen. The minutes of the council meeting that took place on March fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty thirteen show otherwise. The council was asked to suspend the rules in order to pass ordinance number eighteen hundred at the March fourth, twenty thirteen, council meeting. These- this meant that it was considered an urgent matter, and the council needed to authorize the line of credit that night. The proposed agreement between the city of Northport and Compass Bank for a ten million dollar line of credit stipulated that the line of credit would be available on March the fifth, twenty thirteen, and that- that it would be available for a year. My question is, why was the council asked to vote on March fourth, twenty thirteen, on an ordinance that authorized a ten million dollar line of credit if such a line of credit was not financially feasible? Why didn't City Administrator Collins first obtain permission from the council to negotiate a line of credit with Compass Bank? After such a line of credit was deemed feasible, then he should have asked the council for the authorization of the la- line of credit, and I'd- I'd like to get answers to my two questions if I could.
Sure, I'll- I don't, I'll give you the answers as best I can from memory, the, um, the issue of the line of credit, obviously, is that we'd had one previously that was going to be reissued. When we made the decision to do that, there was no- there were no problems as- as we would do, um, financially. The details of the line of credit simply made the line of credit itself not- not a good business decision for the city. Um, the way that that worked previously, um, and we've explained this, we discussed this in two work sessions after, I mean, two pre- pre-council meetings after- after this, and we also discussed it with the finance committee, I think, once. Um, but the way the rules changed for banking were previously, when someone had a line of credit, the effect of the city, anybody else in this case, they would simply sign a letter saying that anytime you decide you want to access this money, you can come in and access this money and there are no issues. Um, when we got into the details of the two, and the reason of that was for some- from some timing, because we also, um, had bond issues that were going on at the time, and I won't get into the- the weeds of the details, but timing is an issue when discussing any sort of debt and any sort of issued debt, in this case, a bond issue. Um, the reason that the line of credit, Ms. Hayes, was not an issue or was not deemed appropriate was because when the banking rules changed, um, the rules were that the banks no longer could simply guarantee you that they would loan you ten million dollars. The banking rules changed in fact that because of requirements on banks, they had to actually set ten million dollars aside in your name that they could not access, and the issue on their books was the ten million dollars from the two thousand ten line of credit that they had was a- was really a- let me give you the best accounting term that I can, it was an asset for the bank, they had ten million dollars in the bank. In two thousand thirteen, that asset became a liability, meaning they had to set that ten million dollars aside for you, whether or not you used it, and you had to pay the interest upfront. Again, the interest upfront in this case was roughly fifty thousand dollars for the year, it just simply didn't make sense to pay fifty thousand dollars for a line of credit or that- have a privilege of accessing that money, which we may not need, so the decision was made not to spend the money and not open the line of credit.
Okay, well, it sounded like, when I made that comment at the last meeting, sounded like you said that it never existed, and I've got the- a copy of the ordinance right here, and the minutes of the meeting-
No, no.
Where it did come up and it did exist, and I- I just wanted to clear that up.
Yes, ma'am, and I- I believe the question or the request were that we provide any documentation, receipts, withdrawals, bank transactions of other things related into that ten million dollar line of credit, and you wanted to see all of the activity from the ten million dollar line of credit, and my response was that I'd love to, but those don't exist because the line of credit was never opened. Is that correct?
Were you asking me?
I'm making sure I've answered all the questions.
No, 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 really, I'm just kinda wondering why you put the council all the trouble of passing-
Mr. Earl. Mr. Earl, Mr. Earl, you spoke, I understand, I understand, but look, it's a sense of decorum, and- and we had a conversation between-
Yeah, overall, overall.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Hayes, are you satisfied with?
Well, I just wanted to make sure, some people misunderstood and thought I was just pulling this out of the air, and that's not the way it happened, it was- it was brought up, and I remember that we talked about it being used in case, we draw down on it in case there were- was a disaster in Northport, similar to the tornado in, uh, several years ago in Tuscaloosa. So, yeah, um, it was, I believe it was, uh, to be drawn down only if there wa- was a disaster, and only if there were four votes of the council.
You'd be referring to the city's reserve fund in that matter and not the- the line of credit, but in any event, the line of credit wasn't opened, so.
Councilwoman, you have any other business, I want to make sure before I, uh-
Well, I have an ordinance here and I have the minutes of the meeting, so it di- it was, uh, it was proposed, and, uh, and- and Steve asking, saying that it would take four votes of the council to access the money and it would be used for a disaster. I just wanted to clear that up because there was some misunderstanding about that, and that, I have no other- no other, uh, questions.
Thank you. Uh, under my business, I wanted to offer, uh, thoughts and condolences, uh, former councilman Lorenzo Freeman lost his mother August the nineteenth, and we, uh, buried her last Tuesday, so want to offer that, that- that bit of information. She was a longtime educator in the county school system for over thirty years and a first grade teacher, so we wanted to offer the thoughts and prayers to the Freeman family at that time, so that's all the business I have under my district. District Three, Councilman Sullivan.
Just one item, I- I got a email this morning, um, from a resident in my district, uh, wanted me to pass on a thank you to Brooke Starnes for an emergency repair we did, uh, about a week ago, so sorry to call you out again, but, uh, I do appreciate all your work, thank you.
District Four, Councilman Acker. District Five, Councilman Harper.
I have none, Mr. President.
Item fifteen is adjournment, ladies and gentlemen, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meetings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen, thank you and be safe going home.